Okay. Want to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for January 31st, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Thank you. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence today to reflect on our actions? Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There are no questions or discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. The agenda is received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to item three, Claims and Payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Whiedener?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Our total bill payment today is $229,429.70, and most things we're paying are routine. We are really, everything except a $21,000 HVAC repair at Pine Crest is the only significant thing today, and that's only $21,000. We also made payments from the 60-40 fund totaling $3,419.62. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. It's been already motioned and seconded. This is a resolution, so please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item four, Presentation from Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Barb Prather, Executive Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me today, and I really appreciate giving this updated since we do get county funding. The mission of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank is to provide nutritious food and grocery products to nonprofit organizations and individuals in Northeast Iowa while offering hunger education to the community and those in need. And we do that in a variety of ways. Our tenure focus is to ensure that we have every meal every day for Northeast Iowans and that we collaborate, educate, and advocate for food insecure people. Needless to say, since last April, the numbers at the Northeast Iowa Food Bank's Food Pantry, which you fund, have gone up tremendously because the disaster proclamation ended. If I compare first quarter of 2020 to first quarter of 23, those numbers are up about 60%, meaning in the first quarter of 2020, we were serving about 2,500 households a month. Now, we are, in the first quarter of 23, we've served about 4,100 clients a month, and families, that is, households. Year-on-year, the numbers are up about 25%. As government programs decline, our need goes up. Couple that with inflation. As I've said, that, those dollars not only hurt the clients that we serve and the families that we serve, but they also hurt the food bank because we're paying 25% more in the cost of things specifically related to food, but also our costs for staffing and our costs for fuel and transportation have also gone up. Your money does help us make ends meet and helps us ensure that people in Blackhawk County who are food insecure have access to it. Last November, we were able to do our annual holiday distribution, and at that distribution, we served about 3,900 families right here in Blackhawk County as well as Waverly, Breamer, and Butler County. So it was a collaboration with the community for two and a half days, which we really appreciate the support that you give us to that. And finally, I just want to note, currently in the Iowa State Legislature, House File 3 has been proposed that would cut SNAP benefits, meaning that if you had any type of asset, you would not qualify. If you currently, and they're telling us it's going to be taken out, they want SNAP to look more like WIC where you get a coupon for certain food items. They've told us that's been taken out, but the amendment for that has not happened. There also has not been a fiscal note on that. My fear, if House File 3 is enacted, that we will see our numbers go up even higher, not only here in Blackhawk County, but throughout our surrounding areas, increasing demand and driving more people into food insecurity. I want to share with you a story in closing about somebody who uses the Cedar Valley Food Pantry, which is the program that you fund. A single mother shared her story about following, receiving food through the pantry. "As a single mom who is disabled and living on disability, the Cedar Valley Food Pantry helps me feed my children healthy nutritious food we may not have otherwise had. Cedar Valley Food Pantry works to help those in need in their time live a healthier lifestyle, and I'm really proud of the fact the team has really embraced healthy food, and we've been able to provide because of a lot of partnerships with local food producers, as well as Hanson's Dairy, as well as our Feeding America partners, to provide much more healthier food to the community, which is often the most expensive for people to purchase. I don't know what your budgeting process is going to be this year. There's a couple options I'd like to discuss with you, but I know if this House bill is enacted, the numbers are going to go up, and we're already seeing an increase. So any support that the county supervisors can, and the county budget can support the food bank and the Cedar Valley Food Pantry, we would appreciate." I will take any questions.
I want to thank you for raising House File 3 and just everything that you do day-to-day and all of your staff does. It seems, House File 3 seems just, you know, right, mean-spirited and cruel. I believe there, just for the public information, some of the things in there are no fresh meats, only canned meats like tuna. I mean, I don't know how many of you want to go home and eat canned salmon tonight. I know I don't. Things like no sliced cheese and no cube cheese, just really ridiculous stuff that is just trying to feed into this narrative that these people are lazy or some nonsense like that, when it's just not the truth. These are the working poor. For the most part, I know that you saw, you know, people coming into the food bank that used to only come in to volunteer and now using the services. So, and I believe I saw that you've got an opinion piece coming out in the Courier this weekend.
Yep, yep. There is an opinion piece coming out. We did release a statement. It's on our website in regards to House File 3. We, like I said, we've been told that that will be amended out, the WIC piece and only buying certain things. We haven't seen the amendment to that, though. The thing that really has me concerned is the asset limit. Currently, we have no asset limits, so that means if you own a car that's decent that can get you to work, you won't even qualify for SNAP. If you own a house and have limited income, you won't even qualify for SNAP. And people are still going to need help, and so they're going to come back to the community and ask the community to support it. So I just encourage anybody to reach out to their elected officials and strongly oppose the legislation. We're for compromise, but right now, there's not a lot to compromise.
I think, was the asset limit around 3,500?
I think it's 2,700 for one person. If you're over the age of 60, it's like $4,500. So like I said, if you have a small pension, Social Security, you own your house, and you don't, you're, you still qualify for SNAP right now, you won't qualify for SNAP going forward.
Any other questions or comments for? Thanks so much for what you do, but appreciate the update today. I was going to say some good information you shared, so thank you.
Can you share what the budgeting process for nonprofits is this year, if I may ask that question? Or do you want to follow up later? That's fine, too.
Well, I think that's probably going to be an item we haven't got to yet. Like I said, we're kind of going through the budget process now, and as we did last year, you know, we discussed it and then allocated some funding for it going forward. So I know the application process hasn't been posted to the site, so we could let you know that as soon as we do make that decision and budget, I would think.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Moving on to item five, Receive Project Updates from Department Heads and Elected Officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
Brief update on the roads. The paved roads are in pretty good condition. We do expect them to be in better condition tomorrow after we get a bit of warmer weather. It should be completely clear by tomorrow afternoon. The mortar graders are out on the gravel road system, plowing back the snow. The, we do have several trucks running to the sand quarry here in Waterloo, refilling up the sand at Longfellow, and then mixing that with the salt and distributing that to our elk run in our Laporte shops to keep them in good supply. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any department heads, elected officials? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes being approved for January 24th and January 26th, which were budget sessions, and January 26th afternoon work session on the county EMA levy.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Minutes are approved. There are, there, I was going to say it says hearings, but there is one hearing later for a re-zone request by John Morgan. Consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon by a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any items anyone wishes to remove or discuss? Hearing none. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item nine, Contracts and Agreements. Resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Tyler Technologies Dallas, Texas, for ARPA project PH-1IT, I'm sorry, 05, for an electronic timekeeping system with a bid of $44,413, be approved as recommended by Al U, Information Technology Director.
Morning, Board. Al U, IT Director. Yes, we formed a small committee to go over multiple bids, and I want to commend our committee of Billy, Allison, and Michelle. They did a great job vetting all the products and a very, very thorough job. So we did provide a scoring matrix, and our recommendation is to go with Tyler Technologies, product code, time, and attendance, and this will serve as the new electronic timesheet. Can I answer any questions for you guys?
Al, have we been associated with Tyler in the past? That name sounds familiar.
They run, they, our ERP finance system is run by Tyler, so New World. New World and also ENCODE, which runs our tax software.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, Discussion on Cedar Bend Humane Society Contract.
Lynda, I put that on there. If you recall, it's been a year since we talked about it. It's been a three-year contract, usually with about a 3% increase. There were some questions about it, and the board at that time decided to just go with a year. I'm assuming that year is coming up again in June. So the question is, does the board want to do anything or just keep rolling it over?
Okay. Floor is open for any discussion or comments.
I'm not sure. Are there any new requests for what they'd want, people would want in the contract?
I know when they were here, well, go ahead, Tom.
I tried to call her the other day, and it's hard to get through to her, and I left a message. Basically, I wanted to check exactly what you were saying, Chris, whether they were prepared to give us another agreement or what the particulars were, and just can't get through to her.
Did we, you said you tried calling. Did we do an email by any chance? I was going to say, would that be any help to see if they could have her come and make a presentation or at least have her come to the board meeting?
I think we could send an email. If I recall, I thought we requested her to come anyway and give a presentation to the board last year, and I don't believe she's been here, so.
Yeah, we did. I don't remember, like I say, if we gave a timeline or anything. So yeah, we can try to follow up.
I encourage the board to, if you get a chance, I worked with Mark Kirps, the sheriffs, on this a couple of years ago because they had quite a few concerns because it basically talks about what we have to do after hours. So I encourage you to talk to him about it, and that's really why I started getting into this with the contract. Basically, we're paying, I think, about $21,000, $2,200 a month, and really for nothing, in my opinion.
No, and I think that is something, like I said, we probably talked at that time, that's something we needed to reconsider or reevaluate. So it's as good that if it's coming up in June, gives us some time to do that. Appreciate that.
One thing that I looked when I went over the list was there's quite a, quite a few of them on there, different locations. One example is in Independence Avenue, right outside the city limits. There's an individual that fed cats all summer to the tune of about 12 or 14 of them. This individual went south in the winter and turned them all into the main society, and the county paid for them for a two-week quarantine for each one. And that's not the only one. The list shows about three or four of them throughout the county.
I think that was the majority of the calls, too. Was it not really cats that I think they were picking up? I'm trying to remember, but, okay.
But our contract doesn't cover anything after hours. We pay for everything above and beyond, plus the sheriff department has to go and take the animal out there themselves, unlock the door, and put the animal away.
Yeah.
Maybe just a question about general process, right? We've got food bank, you know, wanting to understand our budget process. I know Michelle said that as we get through this, maybe, maybe it is a conversation with some of these outside contracts that we've got for services that would tend to make some sense to set a work session, inform them of that work session through email or a letter or phone calls, whatever, so that we can get some of those answers, some of those questions answered, Tom, because, yeah, it sounds like the lack of communication isn't just a one-time thing. It sounds like there's been some issues here in the past from both sides, right? We've got entities that are looking for some answers and some timelines and us looking for some answers on some questions. So maybe just setting some of those work sessions far enough in advance that they can adjust their schedules and get here.
Well, I think we found last year, because of the change in process, is why we changed things, and we went ahead and discussed an allocation and what we thought was an approximate number that we could do and still have an application process going forward. And that allowed us to do that because, yes, to be fair to everyone that wanted to apply, definitely.
Yeah, this particular is not a nonprofit. This is a separate contract that the county has. It's not a, it's not considered in our nonprofits.
No, so we could just ask her, kind of answer your question. We could have her attend a meeting and go forward on that. So that'd be great, be helpful. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Anything else on that item?
No.
Move on to item C, Discussion Possible Board Action on the Windstream contract options. Mr. Givin?
Good morning, Board. Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
As most of you are aware, with our phone service dating back to October, we have been working closely with Windstream, our current provider, and as well as the Iowa Utility Board. Unfortunately, back in October, Blackhawk County facilities were put on a decommission list stating that our infrastructure to our facilities has hit the end of its useful life. And so we got put into that category. In fact, we were decommissioned twice, starting in October, and then once again, I believe, probably about a month after that. And so during that time, we worked very closely, like I had mentioned, with the Iowa Utility Board to gain contact to Windstream to find a remedy to the situation. And here, in probably about the last month, we were contacted by Windstream's, they call them the SLED Group. It's State, Local, and Education Department. We've been working very closely with the team there to, one, look at a solution for us, for our facilities, to continue service, and secondly, to keep us off of that decommission list. So far, obviously, they've been able to keep us off of that list, but we are at a point where they have presented us three different options, three different contracts. Same contract, just different term limits. And so just to kind of give you a rundown of what the solution involves is essentially putting us on a, like a cloud-based management-type system. So they would have a, it'd be, we'd still keep our infrastructure internally, so our phone systems would, you would see no change there, but how we get service would change. It would no longer be a legacy-type phone system. So it would be broadband and provided by Windstream and their routers and modems, whatever it takes to get us onto that service. We sent to you both, all three of the contracts. The language in the contract is all the same with the exception of the term limits. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look through that, if you have any questions, but we are, I know this is a discussion possible board action. And this really is kind of a phase one to a two-phase project. As you remember, for ARPA, we had a proposal to go to SIP phone services. Here, just recently, Windstream has provided us their solution for that, and we work closely with the IT team, several different meetings with them, and I think it's safe to say that we were all very impressed with the system that they presented to us. So by, by going with this first phase and getting our service locked in and getting us off of that decommission list then sets us up for the future, for the next phase, which would then get us into a SIP service. With that, you get the more resilient type of service. You can tie in other facilities that the county has, such as conservation, secondary roads. You could put everything under one umbrella, and that's really one of the goals that we're looking at, is tying all of our services in. It gives us the ability to use soft phones. You can still use your handsets, but you can also use a soft phone on the computer. It gives the user a lot more functionality as far as making changes, developing hunt groups. One example that we talked about would be the health department. When they set up the contact tracing, they put in several phone sets in there for that. With this phase two part of this project, that would be very, an easy task to do for each department to kind of manage themselves. So again, that's phase two. That'll be coming down the road, but this first phase really is just looking at making our service more reliable, getting us off of that decommission list, and allowing us to move forward to look at these other opportunities that, or options that Windstream offers. So as we look through, we were originally looking at the one-year term, and the reason we did that is because we just wanted to allow ourselves to not make such a commitment because at that time, we weren't really sure what they had to offer for this phase two process. Once we went through that, and we were all quite impressed with what they had to offer, we felt it was very simple. I think IT would agree. Now we're, now we're looking harder at the three-year, and that's what our recommendation today would be for the board, is to sign the three-year to lock us in. At that rate, that is very similar to what we're paying now. I think, looking at that, we're about, current rate is at 3,240. The new solution would be 3,952. So that does equate to about $8,500 a year, but compared to the two-year and the one-year, it is significantly cheaper. So that's our recommendation today, is to sign that three-year lease or three-year agreement with Windstream, allow us to keep moving forward with the other services that they provide, and just lock us in for a long term.
Does this cost for phase one only?
This is, yeah, what I'm proposing for today is the phase one part of this project, and that is just the service coming to our facility. So functionality-wise, you know, we're not going to see any changes. We're just going to have more resilient service, more reliable service, and get us off of that decommission list.
So it'll cost then for phase two, we'll have an additional cost?
We'll have, and if you recall, we already had presented a ARPA application for that, and I believe we had a not to exceed $100,000 for that second phase. One of the nice things I do want to mention with going with Windstream is our existing, our existing equipment that we currently have with our IP phone sets can be utilized under that process. Now, there's other services out there that, that don't allow you to do that, so then you would be forced into buying new handsets. And so we're hopeful, once we get that tidied up on that phase two, that we're actually going to see that come back at a much lesser cost.
Did you say we do cover conservation?
Right now, we do not, but as we move into the phase two of this, that is our goal, is to get all of our shops, conservation, secondary roads, under one service.
Yeah, I called out there yesterday three times. I could hear her, but she couldn't hear me. Yep, obviously, the phones weren't working.
So in this proposal, there are new things that we have that we're not having now. You've kind of reviewed some of those.
For the, for what, what the asking for today is, is really just, we're not going to necessarily see any, any new bells and whistles on our phone system. This just gets our service to our facility, gets us off of that decommission list. It's, we may, we're hopeful that we're going to see more reliability because it's going to be broadband and it's not going to be relied on the old legacy phone system coming to our facilities, which is what Windstream is decommissioning. So everybody's going to essentially be going to this. Unfortunately, we were notified back in April. That went unnoticed. Once we hit October, we had, we got decommissioned. And so it took a lot of, a lot of effort on everybody's part to get us off of that list and to allow us some time to figure out a solution to this.
We had some pretty serious interruptions of service at that time as we got called.
So.
That's good. And, and this cost increase, like you said, if we do the three-year option, it looks like it's about $700 more.
Yes, yeah.
Otherwise, there was considerable, I said, to the $5,700 and $6,800.
Yeah.
I do like that if, if we do move forward with phase two, this route that the current headsets or phone sets are usable because those aren't very old.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of great benefits in that phase two, as we learned, as we just recently learned, you know, the user, user-friendly, very user-friendly, one, one showing, and I picked it up, so that says a lot.
What about the concerns about kind of the all-call notification?
That is a part of this phase two. In fact, we've been talking a great deal about that. What we're looking at, what we're hopeful, is to be able to incorporate our phone sets into that all-call. So right now, as it sits, we have speakers in the hallway, and what happens is, you know, you have people in individual offices. It's very hard to hear that. So that is something that we committed to back during the ARPA discussions and the SIP, is that mass notification is a top priority for this phase two.
And I wanted to tell the board, we had discussed earlier about just having this as a discussion item and not having the possible board action in case the board wanted more time to speak with Rory or to review the options, but I'm decided to just put it on to, if, if the board was so moved to, want to take action on it today. So it's a pleasure of the board.
I'm, I'm okay to move forward today.
As am I.
You are?
Yeah.
Tom, Dan?
Me, too. I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I'll, I'll offer a motion for the, for the three-year contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item 10, Other Business. Discussion with Perspective Consulting Partners LLC regarding the implementation and transition plan for the county's third-party administrator for health coverage due to the acquisition of Preferred One by United Healthcare.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Amanda Fezremeyer, HR Director. So I would like to introduce our benefit consultant, Stacy Wondershade. She's on the call right now via Zoom. She is here to talk with you all. Last week, I had given you some information about the notice that we received, that our current health insurance plan, provided by Preferred One, is, has been acquired. And therefore, we are preparing for a transition to UMR, which is a third-party administrator owned by United Healthcare. So it's purely discussion. It's a, an opportunity for you guys to ask some questions, to learn some more as to how we're going to handle this. It's going to heavily involve the Finance Director, the HR Office, as well as our Auditor's Office, who manages that self-insurance fund, as well as the claims and payments for the self-insurance that we have, or for the health insurance that we have. And then, of course, making sure that employees understand what is happening and how we're able to retain what we have with Preferred One going forward with United Healthcare and kind of future outlook with that. So I'm going to turn it over to Stacy. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask at any point, and I'll let her kind of carry the rest of this conversation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good morning, Stacy.
Good morning, Board. Board. Stacy Wondershade with Perspective Consulting Partners in Urbandale, Iowa. I just wanted to make myself available today to answer any questions that the board might have. You know, we were notified, I was notified of this change taking place effective for seven-one on January eighteenth. I think that, you know, part, oh, well, I asked them if we could delay it by a year to afford us time to plan and to also potentially go out to the market and look at other third-party administrator options. You guys know from history, or at least some of the board members know from long history, that I would much rather the board and the county be able to make a decision on a third-party administrator based on your own needs and terms, rather than an implementation or a transition being planned for you. So that was of concern. They indicated that wasn't an option, that they wanted to be able to shut down their Preferred One system a year from now. So they, you know, need to transition cases now.
Stacy, could you elaborate a little bit more on what that means for us going forward, or what those steps are that'll need to be taken?
Yeah. So essentially, what it means is, you know, Preferred One is the third-party administrator who processes the medical plan, claims, answers the customer service phone calls, you know, distributes identification cards, really all that has to do with the medical claims. So that is shutting down that acquisition of Preferred One by United Healthcare. United Healthcare has their own third-party administrator called UMR. And they want to transition everything over to their UMR platform and then shut down that Preferred One system. So the, what it will mean for employees are new identification cards. It'll be, you know, potentially a new eight-hundred number to call with questions about claims. EOBs will have UMR's logo on it instead of Preferred Ones. So all of these employees that are of Preferred One today are going to be employees of UMR going forward. As for the transition, there, there is a time commitment, which is not insignificant, that Amanda briefly outlined here earlier. But, you know, as with any kind of transition, we're really kind of starting, you know, starting fresh to make sure that everything is set up appropriately. So the benefits will transfer over as they are today. And there will be audit measures in place at UMR to ensure that that transition was correct. Although, it does require my involvement, as well as the team at the county, specifically benefits and HR, to review the benefits. It'll consist of probably three or four conference calls, one to address banking and billing, one to address eligibility and enrollment, and another to look at the claims and make certain that those benefits have been interpreted appropriately for that transition from Preferred One to UMR. So, you know, there is a, there is a time commitment in order to ensure that the transition is smooth.
I'd just like to go on the record and say unequivocally that I believe United Healthcare is an untrustworthy, unscrupulous company. This county had to sue, threaten to sue them for half a million dollars to get reimbursements that they were trying to screw us out of at a country view. I am not comfortable with entrusting the healthcare of our employees to this awful corporation. This is baloney.
I, I, I do want to just make one delineation here. The county's plan is self-funded. So it is your money that funds the actual claims. And then there's reinsurance purchased in order to protect the county from any catastrophic claims. UMR, which is owned by United Healthcare, is truly a third-party administrator. So they will, you know, act on behalf of your plan to process claims according to the way your plan is written.
I'm not buying it. United Healthcare was one of the MCOs in the state screwing providers over and screwing patients over, denying care and denying coverage. Their business model is to make money by screwing providers over, by delaying paying. We can, I do not trust these people. This is, this is horrible. This is not okay.
I just want to.
We pride ourselves on good healthcare coverage for our employees. We do not want this crap corporation involved. I'm correct, we had to sue them for half a million dollars. Mike Trinan got it back for us. This is horseshit. I'm sorry.
We didn't, we didn't have to sue them, but we had to threaten to sue.
They tried to sell for, like, what, a hundred forty-four thousand when the O was over half a million?
Something like that. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was right around half a million dollars.
I, I do just, I can, I want to say one more thing about the way the plan is structured. The fact that you're self-funded and UMR is just acting on your behalf. They, United Healthcare is an insurance company, and so if they don't pay a claim, that saves them money out of their pocket. Whereas here, with UMR, if a claim is not paid, it saves the county, it's not saving them. So they're acting on your behalf. And so if your claims are payable and, you know, determined by your plan design, then those will be, those will be processed. Now, having heard your concern, we're sitting at the end of January. We could look at doing a, an RFP and look at other third-party administrators. And that will be, you know, an additional, you know, that will take additional time and resources to get, normally, I would want to be doing an RFP at the beginning of December for a seven-one renewal, so that a decision could be made in March. And then implementation could take place April, May, June, so that employees have identification cards by, by July one. But, I mean, if this is something that the county is interested in doing and adamant about not being aligned in any form or fashion with United Healthcare, that's something that, you know, that we could orchestrate. It's, it's just not the ideal timing, which is not your fault, not my fault. You know, so.
We, Stacy, is it true, we have one year left? It preferred one has stayed, right?
Um, your, your fees are not going to change, the admin fees that are with Preferred One. They're going to honor those through the end of your contract term with them, which is six-thirty of twenty-five.
Okay, so it's two years left?
Yeah.
For the fees. Okay.
But, I mean, if, if it is the, the, the preference for the county, you know, we can move forward with a, with a formal RFP process.
And that seems like that would be an item for discussion, obviously, for.
Right.
Discussion and vote or action at, at some point in time, if that's the case. I was going to say, this is discussion only.
Sure.
Obviously. What's all involved, I guess, and how it impacts our employees, I, I think is critical, but.
Right. And I think that's, you know, with Stacy's experience and other clients, the main thing is to make this a smooth transition, whether that's through an RFP, whether that's through, at one, we, it's really just the opportunity to recognize that this is changing and it was an acquisition, you know, outside of our control. However, you know, we certainly could come back with what a timeline for an RFP would look like and what that would be in accordance with the agreement that we have with Perspective But yeah, I mean, the timeline isn't exactly ideal, but certainly something we could explore. I think at this point, you're looking at, if we don't do the RFP, we have a plan in place. Stacy has definitely provided a plan for us to make this transition with the third-party administrator to, you know, reinforce that we want to keep what we've already negotiated with, the existing networks and the existing providers and the fees and everything, to ensure that is a, a smooth transition for employees, so that they aren't feeling like, you know, I was going to my doctor last month and now it changed July one and I can't go to that doctor anymore. So that's really important to us to continue that, to care for the employees and their dependents is received and that the UMR is aligned to what our, our articles that we put out there and the, the SPDs that we have in place right now. So would you like us to come back? Stacy, Tim, Michelle and I could have a brief meeting to talk about what an RFP looks like. We could certainly come back next week, possibly, if it works for schedules. Is that something that we'd like to?
We, we haven't always had Preferred One, Amanda. Didn't we bid that out?
Yes, it was. Or go ahead, Stacy. Yeah, you know that.
Yeah. Yes. So the county has been with Preferred One since 2014. And you might remember, Tom, that it was when the third-party administrator you were with was getting shut down. And so we went out to the market and looked at several options at that time and then ended up with Preferred One. But it was a pretty detailed process. And I think maybe, I don't know, if, Tom, I think maybe you were part of that process?
Yes, I was.
Okay, yeah. So you might remember that we had meetings and finalist meetings and, you know, invited them in to kind of present on services and so forth. So, you know, we could look at a scaled-down version of that process, you know, given the kind of short timeline here that we have to work with. So we could, you know, look at an adjusted RFP process to kind of shortcut it and accommodate the glide path to implementation for seven-one.
Would there be a cost involved with an RFP?
Yes. Our agreement with the county has pricing for RFPs and implementations included.
I mean, I guess I would like discussion to at least know the viability of going through an RFP. I certainly would not go with this again next year. I mean, they, you know, their, their actions, you know, cost people their lives in the state. Their actions cause providers to close down. And I'm not comfortable with, you know, a, a penny of, of our taxpayer dollars going to them. And I'm not comfortable with trusting them to be involved in any aspect of the healthcare of our employees. They've shown that they cannot be trusted. We had to threaten them with lawsuit. I mean, how many, how many businesses do we enter in contracts with that we had to take to, threaten to take to court for half a million dollars?
So we can definitely look at the viability of that. You know, I think we want to do a little bit of a cost-benefit analysis. I want to make sure even going out to RFP that we're able to retain, you know, that is one of our biggest strengths there at the county with our workforce, is that we have very strong benefits. Our network includes Mayo Clinic and includes Iowa City. I mean, it's, it's, and many of our employees would attest to how strong these benefits are and that fit their needs, as well as the needs of their family. So that, that would just be one thing to, just to look at that as to the viability of the timeline, as well as, you know, can we get everything that we currently have even through the RFP? And, and this being not, been done since 2014, it's not like it's a, you know, bad opportunity to look at that, it's just the timing is a little constrained. So, but I agree, if we look at something as to where we're moving to UMR, the RFP is not a desirable option at this time, then I would definitely recommend that we plan on doing it for the next fiscal year, or I'm sorry, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So. And Stacy can certainly, she'll support that, you know, and work with us through that process. I don't know, on the other end of that, is with the time, our own time constraints that also limit possible vendors that would bid on this too. I don't know. So those are things that we can discuss and bring back to the board.
Do you think a week's enough time or, to do that, or?
Stacy, do you think a week's enough time, or would you prefer two weeks?
I, I think we have to act quickly. If, if there's a potential for going out to RFP, we have to act quickly so that we can get it out.
Okay.
Great.
So we'll plan on next week?
Next week.
Okay.
Sound good.
And that'll be a discussion, board action, based on the information that we were seeing. Sound good?
That'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Stacy or, okay? Dan, Tom, any other questions or comments?
No, I'm fine.
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item B. Motion to approve the updated eminent domain commission list for 2023.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you. Will say, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Item C. Motion to approve the updated various committees list.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank Debbie for that work. I think those were lists that hadn't been updated in quite a while. Item D. Motion to appoint Supervisor Hall, Supervisor Schwartz, and Finance Director Michelle Weedner to a committee with Sheriff Thompson to study long-term healthcare plans for the jail and to start the planning process for a request for proposal for healthcare services for the jail, as the current contract for services will expire January 31st, 2024. And this was just put on formalizing, I think, that action that was talked about and included in a previous item last week, so if that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a, a quick follow-up to this, just so we got an idea on timeline here. Assuming that we, if the intent, after this contract ending the end of January 2024, the intent is then to go to RFP. Sheriff Thompson can speak to, are we prepared to internally create that RFP? Or are we going to have to go out for bid? And then what is that process to craft the RFP for the RFP?
Good morning, Board. No, that's a great question. So if you recall, a couple emails ago regarding this topic, I gave you kind of a timeline. And the timeline is pursuant to our lack of credibility in developing a standardized RFP for the richness or robustness of what we are going to ask for. So the reality is, if we are marching down the road of looking at an RFP, that's probably something that the subcommittee needs to look at. probably something that the subcommittee needs to look at in parallel with some of that localized option, right? So we're gonna have to look at two things at the same time, because really, um, if we're gonna go RFP, we probably need to RFP for a consultant pretty early on, because we're about six months-ish for, uh, consultancy, RFP development, vetting, and, and contracting. So yeah, that year is a very tight window to be able to do something to get a new company onboarded. Um, in fact, we may have to entertain some sort of month-to-month after January, there's probably not enough time if we go to RFP. That's probably true also, uh, for local partnerships too, but, um, we've already started some of that initial rollout, uh, in conversation between now and March. Again, we're gonna try and get you all through budget, um, before we start in earnest with subcommittee meetings, um, that way you can get that off your plate, but in the meantime, we will have had some conversations with People's Clinic, with Public Health, with, uh, some of those players too, uh, Black Hawk Running Mental Health, some of those other folks, so that we'll at least, at least have some initial dialogue that we can start digesting as a subcommittee, um, uh, between then and now, but you're right, the timing is, is pretty tight.
We're looking probably into July?
For.
We, we need to, in order to have.
For us to know if we're gonna have to go to RFP in order to have the RFP crafted for service.
I would, I would agree probably before that. I think, I think we probably got a couple-month window, um, to, to have, uh, some direction back to the board, uh, for guidance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate, like I say, the two of you being willing to serve with Sheriff Thompson and Michelle also, so, thank you, moves it along. Anything else, any comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five on Tuesday, February fourteenth, at the Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the proposed ordinance number seven-seven dash two-seven-six from a request submitted by Dr. Brad Boswell to rezone four acres from agricultural district to agricultural residential district to construct two new single-family homes at east of sixty-two twenty-five Ford Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, this is just for an advertising for public hearings, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, February seventh, in the Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the proposed Blackhawk County Jail lobby remodel project.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded, again, for advertising for the hearing, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, resolution that the minor plat of survey submitted by Michelle to plat one-point-five-one acres in order to construct a new single-family home north of fifty-three thirty-four Big Woods Road, legally described as below, and if approved, that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or questions? Seth, please?
Okay, yeah, uh, this was a request that was submitted by Michelle Blon to, uh, plat one-point-five-one acres in order to construct a new single-family home at north of five-three-three-four Big Woods Road. Um, uh, it was moved by, uh, Bozier and seconded by Nagel to approve the request by Michelle Blon, uh, to, uh, plat one-point-five-one acres in order to construct a new single-family home at north of five-three-three-four Big Woods Road. Uh, the request was unanimously approved. Uh, the one-point-five-one acres in question is located north of five-three-three-four Big Woods Roads, which is approximately one thousand eight hundred and fifty feet north of the Dunkerton Road and Big Woods Road intersection. The one parcel containing the one-point-five-one acres for the proposed plat area has been zoned agricultural district, uh, district since the adoption of the zoning warrants in nineteen eighty-two. Planning and zoning, uh, commission unanimously recommended approval to rezone one-point-five-one acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district at the regular meeting on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, and, uh, the, uh, the request did go before the Board of Supervisors on January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three, um, and, uh, the, uh, rezone was approved and the minor plat request is, is going before you folks today. Um, the surrounding, uh, plat area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zoned agricultural district and AR agricultural residential district to the north. Land of the south is zoned agricultural district, AL Agricultural Limited District, and the city of Cedar Falls. Land of the east is zoned agricultural district, AL Agricultural Limited District, and AR Agricultural Residential District. Land of the west is zoned agricultural district and CM Commercial Manufacturing District. Minor plat areas designated as agricultural on the future land use map, component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and the north, south, and west is designated as agricultural. Land of the east is designated as parks and open space and residential. Approximately one-third of the plat area is located in a special flood hazard area, however, there's adequate amount of land in the rezone area to build a home that is located outside a hundred-year flood plain and will meet setbacks for Blackhawk County. Uh, the client wishes to plat one-point-five-one acres in order to construct a single-family home, the parcel's large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot in size requirements for the AR by being greater than one-point-five acres and wider than one hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission approved the request at the regular meeting on, uh, January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Great, thank you.
Seth, this is basically, the board approved this already, correct?
Uh, that, that, they, uh, they approved the rezone, but, uh, this is the first time the minor plats coming before you folks for.
But isn't, isn't the plat over the years, if that's just the formality for the board, is that correct, because we already?
I, yes, yes, I, I, I believe, yep, that, that is correct, sir.
Kind of the next step in the process.
Correct.
Is this the last step in the process, or we're gonna have to force him to come back again?
Uh, this'll, this'll be the last step.
Okay. Not that the civics lesson is boring or anything, but you know, yeah.
Sure.
Matter of business, right? All right, any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
It's already been.
Oh.
This one has, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, I was gonna say please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you. Okay, the time is nine fifty-six, and we are entering the hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven dash two-seven-five, the Morgan Rezone.
All right, motion received and placed and filed, proof of publication of noticed public hearing.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion's carried. Motion to waive the first reading as noticed by.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved, seconded.
Mr. Reader, was there any written comments provided?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, all right, Seth, thank you.
Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, reviewed the request by John Morgan on behalf of Monarch Farms LLC to rezone one-point-five-one acres from agricultural district to C commercial district in order to construct a forty-one by forty-four, one thousand eight hundred and four square feet store restaurant, which will feature onsite and locally grown produce and host weddings and other special events. Um, it was moved by, uh, Brunette and seconded by shares to approve the request by John Morgan on behalf of Morgan Farms LLC to rezone one-point-five-one acres from agricultural district to C commercial district in order to construct a forty-one by forty-four, one thousand eight hundred and forty square foot store restaurant, which will feature onsite locally grown produce at five-thirty East Eagle Road with the following conditions: one, the use for the building will be limited to a restaurant, including but not limited to, um, farm-to-table, uh, agricultural experience; hours of operation will be limited from six AM to five PM, seven days a week; uh, three, the use of the, uh, restaurant facility shall allow for small gatherings; and four, allow for indoor weddings within the restaurant facility, uh, but shall not allow for outdoor weddings or similar gatherings unless it involves field trips to the orchard for farm or produce. Uh, the request was approved five to one with, uh, Nagel denying the request. The, uh, surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zoned agricultural district to the north, south, and east. Uh, Eagle Center, which is twenty-one hundred feet to the west, has land that is zoned agricultural district, AL Agricultural Limited District, AR Agricultural Residential District, RS Residential Suburban District, C Commercial District, and CM Commercial Manufacturing District. Rezone areas designated as agricultural on the future land use map, owner of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, surrounding areas designated as agriculture to north, south, and east, land of the west is designated as parks and open space and residential. Uh, none of the rezone areas located in a special flood, uh, flood hazard area. Uh, the applicant wishes to rezone one-point-five-one acres from, uh, agricultural to commercial in order to construct a forty-one by forty-four store restaurant, which will feature onsite and locally grown produce and all small weddings and other events. The parcel's large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the size and lot requirements of C Commercial District by being greater than zero-point-one-seventy-two acres in size and wider than one hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the, uh, property, main parcel, had a lease score of two-sixty-two, which is considered high agricultural value site. The zoning order notes that land, uh, that is classified as having high agricultural value should be strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. Also states that in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment, however, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances are these sites to be developed only after compelling evidence is provided. Zoning ordinance does list several criteria, um, area has not been a rock up or active roll crop production or in CRP for the previous fifteen years. Area is not conducive to production by size of parcel shape, area is compatible with surrounding uses by, uh, reason of similar adjacent uses, meeting any one of these criteria should not constitute approval, however, each request is viewed, um, differently. Uh, the, uh, the land currently consists of, uh, orchard trees and pasture, um, it's not in-farm production, uh, the, uh, technical review committee noted the high lease score of two-sixty-two for the rezone area. Uh, noted the rezone area contains, uh, orchard trees and local produce that will be grown onsite, uh, will be, uh, considered an agricultural activity, the restaurant store building will be taking up one thousand eight hundred and four square feet of space along with less than one-quarter acre for parking. Kil-Amedal wanted to ensure the septic system is large enough for the site because, uh, a lot of water may be required to, uh, used to wash produce. Uh, the applicant, uh, Blackhawk County, the general is already approved, the entrances that will come off of East Eagle Road. And that is the, the request. Um, a, a conditions agreement was signed, um, this, these conditions were basically created by working with the neighbors. They worked with the planning and zoning commissioners to come up with these, um, to, you know, uh, give Mr. Morgan a potential opportunity, but, you know, they were kind of concerned about, you know, having, like, weddings last until eleven at night because he lived right next door, um, so that's why we came up with these conditions, and these conditions directly came from the neighbors and the planning and zoning commissioners and were later incorporated into the final motion. And as I said before, conditions to zoning, uh, agreement has been signed by Mr. Morgan to address these issues that the neighbors had.
I was gonna ask if there'd been anyone that had protested or showed up at the meeting at all?
I believe we do have some neighbors here that, that would be more than happy to discuss.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
How about the, how about the applicant? Is the applicant available too? Okay, super, so we can have both. So, who would like to begin? I was gonna say, do you wanna, yeah, I was gonna say, step up and talk about the project if you'd like, or I was gonna say Seth gets, uh, commended for all, reading all that as quickly as he did.
Need a bottle of water?
I don't know who could've done that, yeah.
It's a little like listening to Paul Harvey.
That was quick. Thank you. If you'd just please give your name and address when you, and, and any comments.
My name is John Morgan, we are at five-thirty East Eagle Road. This is a different one.
Oh, oops, I have a different one, I apologize.
That's the previous, yeah.
There we got it. I apologize.
Thank you.
So, the idea is to just put a small storefront, the, a lot of that square footage will be a porch, actually, it's actually just gonna be a very small building in order to, uh, basically to, this will allow me to prepare and cut foods onsite, which is where I wouldn't be able to if it wasn't zoned commercial, you know, um, the idea is to put a small delicatessen in there with, you walk in and see, um, a number of baked goods, um, very nicely crafted, um, paninis, salads, things like that from the property, produced on the property and local, um, surrounding ones as well, such as, um, Family Fresh Marketplace and other people like that. Uh, the, the goal is to create, uh, a learning experience for the youth in the Cedar Valley families to come out and see where their stuff is actually being produced. If you ask my kids where apples come from, they used to say the back of Hy-Vee, but now they know it's from a tree, you know, these berries come from canes or bushes, um, vines, things like this, and they can put their hands on it and then actually get to taste it in the store where we can cut it into, create it and make it into things basically, ciders, applesauce, things like that, where we couldn't do that without the commercial ice kitchen, just stainless steel and approved by the Board of Health, obviously. And then, uh, as far as the concerns, I do have in my business plan, uh, budgeted, some of a fence to keep people and animals far away from my neighbors, plus it would be a whole property in between the storefront and them too, for, that people will not be allowed on this whole middle one here. Uh, that's currently where my dad's living, so there'll be a fence there to keep them contained within this red zone. And the, uh, the water issues, I've spoke with my plumber about and contractor, and they don't seem to be too concerning, but they said they'd have to go through a DNR and be approved, you know, everything has to have its checks and levies, and so they don't really have too many concerns, um, personally. So, like I say, it's just meant to be a fun opportunity and learning experience for, uh, schools, families, and potentially some culinary, uh, like Kirkwood could come by, you know, with a group of people, and we could show them our market garden and the apples and things like that.
Did the, um, health department, did they check with you on the sewage part of it? Whether you have a septic or?
Uh, no, I, I haven't spoke to them about that in particular, but I have had a, uh, conversation with me, who would be my health inspector, and, um, her and I have had lengthy conversations about what all will be included there, and then my plumber also is very familiar with this, and like I said, he, he said he would have to get every, all of his plans approved by the DNR ahead of time.
But did they sign off on this project, the health department?
Uh, not yet, no.
Yeah, probably at the time when you, I was gonna say their sign off is probably at the time you put up the, uh, application to them, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, basically, I was trying to get, see if this would go through before we move too much more further, or else the plans will change.
When are you hoping to open by? Sorry, curiosity.
Uh, hopefully next fall.
Okay.
Depends on, you know, everything's moving slower than usual, and, um, a lot of people are busy, the contractors and things like that, or, I'm still trying to get a lot of their bids put together and things like that, but the goal is, you know, next fall to be open.
I know that there are, um, a number of restaurants in the community that do a great job of incorporating local foods, but I think this would be the first actual farm-to-table restaurant in the community, so that's.
I've been selling to Montage, and they're gonna have their own little greenhouse where everything, uh, in that greenhouse will come, go to Montage this year, and I'd also, you know, be willing to work with the, the gal from the food bank too, with a little pot, you know, ten-by-twenty pot that, you know, lettuce, tomato, cucumber, all goes to them.
They, they've got a program where they accept fresh produce.
Yeah.
From growers.
So, I mean, I just, I'm just, um, reaching out to all kinds of people in the community. I've been selling apples to Verve, um, they did a nice seasonal, uh, cinnamon apple this year and last year, so.
Sure, maybe this is first steps for it, right?
Yeah. There's a long way to go, yes, so.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you. Any more comments or questions for? Any questions or comments for Mr. Morgan, Tom, or Dan?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, if you'd just give your name and address.
Yep, um, my name is Deb Poland-Vinokan, live right next door to this, to this quaint little orchard, six-oh-two East Eagle Road, you'll see our house right next door. Um, I am all about farm-to-table. My family raises sheep on the south side of Waterloo, I help with classes, we take our sheep to classes. I've always been very, very supportive at these types of activities. We personally don't believe this is a very compatible use. We live right next door, we're both retired, we're there all the time, that's our home, it's half a million dollar home. We moved out to the country to get away from things like this. We love John, we think he's a great guy, we love this quaint little apple orchard next door, but having a restaurant out in the middle of nowhere doesn't seem to be a very compatible use. I've talked to planning and zoning people who've been on local planning and zoning, they're just appalled that this might go in this, this space. We're just concerned about all the activity, it's a very busy road. There's not a lot of space for parking that could overflow. It was initially talking about weddings, and we did say in the meeting, we could tell this was going to move forward. But we said, you know, we just don't want weddings in the backyard, which is where that came from. And again, we're very supportive, we think this is a great idea. We just don't think it's a appropriate place for it. We just don't, we moved away from the town to get away from things like this in this very quiet area. So, although, you know, you'll do what you'll want to do. We just want to voice our concerns that we just don't think this is compatible and will negatively impact the value of our home. Because I've talked to many people that have said, I would never live next door to something like that. So, I see that it could impact the value of my home, which is a very big concern to me and the enjoyment of my property, because we're outside all the time. But again, we, we love this quaint little orchard next door, we like working around John. We like the openness, no fences and just, you know, being neighbors. That's why we moved to an area like that. So, we just want to voice our concerns for that.
So, were those some of the same, the concerns that when Seth talked about the agreement with Mr. Morgan, it was to accommodate those?
Yes, we voiced those concerns at planning and zoning that we thought it would impact the marketability and enjoyment of our home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seth, what other things are in, like I say, in the agreement? Like I say, as far as what the neighbors' concerns were, you say were kinda built into the agreement? Kind of the conditions?
Yeah, basically, the, the use of the building will be limited to a restaurant, including but not limited to a farm-to-table agricultural experience. Hours of operation will be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. seven days a week. The use for the restaurant facility shall allow for small gatherings and allow for indoor weddings within the restaurant facility, but shall not allow for outdoor weddings or similar gatherings unless it involves field trips to the orchard or to the farm produce. So, basically, you'll have, you know, the restaurant, and then there's also the separate orchard and, you know, as well as, you know, the produce that's being created for it. And then also, you know, for other entities, you know, within Blackhawk County.
What is projected capacity?
Not very much for that 1,800, it's less than 1,800 square feet, so, and not very much. If we were to have a wedding inside, it would be like this.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second to close the hearing, unless there are other discussion questions? Alright, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, yes?
I just had one quick one for Seth.
Yes.
Seth, I, Mr. Morgan, I think misunderstood my question. Isn't the Health Department part of the PMZ zoning process when they go through it over there? As far as the, the septic and so forth?
Yeah, that, that is handled through the, through the Health Department, that is correct.
And they, they reviewed this one prior and signed off?
Uh, I, I mean, yeah, yeah, I did, I did have an opportunity to speak with them. Kelly Amador was, main concern was just that if they're, you know, that, that they have adequate water and, you know, septic, if they plan on, you know, using the water for the vegetables, which they, they probably do. So, her concern was just that they'd have a large enough septic system and adequate amount of water to address those needs as well. But yes, that is decided through the, the approval process for septic. And well in the county does go through Blackhawk County Health Department. But there might be some other things that Mr. Morgan may be referring to as well, other requirements from other, other state entities. But, but yes, the, the, the septic and the well will have to go through the Blackhawk County Health Department for approval. That is correct, sir.
Do they attend the PMZ meeting, or is that a separate?
Yeah, yeah, the, the folks were, were there at, at the meeting. And I think, yeah, Mr. Morgan did participate via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, I was gonna say there's been a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Meeting is closed. Next item is the resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance of two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lalen?
Yes. Item five is a resolution for the ordinance adoption that the ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended to the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 275 to section six, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by John Morgan and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-275.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Lalen?
Yes. Thank you. Item 11 is the closed session. We will have a resolution that-